Good evening. Welcome to the July 23, 2024 City Council meeting. The meeting is hereby called to order. Members of the public may attend this City Council meeting in person or may watch and listen remotely by viewing the meeting on Channel 8 WCTV and at the city's website at www.yz.org/wctv. Public comment during the public forum and/or public hearing portions of the meeting may be provided in person, in advance, or by logging into the Zoom call and raising your hand during the public hearing. When your name is called in the meeting, you will be seen and heard in our council chambers and the cable channel. You will be asked to unmute, and then you may begin your comment. All public comments must include your full name and address. Second item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask everyone to please stand and follow along. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next item is the roll call. We have two council members who are absent today, Councilmember Parkhill and Councilmember Iverson. I'd also like to note that earlier, the council participated in a workshop where we reviewed and discussed the following items. We had a discussion of the establishment of a public art committee, discussion of short-term rental ordinance, and review of draft alternatives, discussion of a council vacancy and appointment process. Next item is to approve the agenda, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as is? Or would anyone care to make any changes?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
To approve the agenda as is? Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the motion passes. Takes us to the public forum. As a reminder for members of the public who may be in attendance this evening, who are interested in speaking, we ask that you please state your name, address, and indicate if you are representing a group. And we also ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. The item you wish to speak about is something that is on the agenda. For those that are in person, we ask that you fill out a room at the table at the back of the room and hand it to staff. For those that are watching via Zoom, we ask that you please send a note via chat to staff and let them know what agenda item you wish to speak about. We also require that your camera is turned on when you speak. We originally had one item in the public forum for discussion this evening, and that was an update from our Parks and Trails Board Member and Chair, Tori Schalki. But he is not able to be with us this evening. So do we have any other items?
Madam Mayor, we do not, and we'll just ask Mr. Schalkel to come to a subsequent meeting.
Schalkel, yes.
I always get it wrong.
I always get it wrong as well. My apologies to Tori. Embarrassing. Okay. So we'll just move on. Do we have anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak?
We do not.
Okay. Wonderful. Then we will move on to new agenda items. This is an opportunity for council members to bring up any agenda items they would like to discuss or bring up in the future. Counsel, anything? No?
Might ask the staff to roll the agenda up so where we need to be.
Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you for that, Councilmember Plekish. So we'll move on through the agenda this evening, and the next item is the consent agenda. And the following items are on this evening's consent agenda. Approval of the City Council workshop and regular meeting minutes of July 9, 2024. Approval of the check register, approval of municipal licenses, receipt of the police activity report, receipt of the building activity report, adoption of Resolution 31-2024, adopting the 2024 Hennepin County All-Hazardous Mitigation Plan, approval of annual renewals of 2024 sidewalk café permits, adoption of Resolution 30-2024, accepting donations for the Panaway ribbon-cutting event, approval of Panaway change order number three for additional piling depth, and acceptance of resignation from Councilmember Kathy Iverson. Members of the council, do either of you have any questions or wish to pull an item for further conversation? Yes, Councilmember Plekish.
Madam Mayor, I don't want to pull anything, but I would like to make a comment about item J, resignation of Councilmember Kathy Iverson. What I would like to say to the council, to the staff, to the community, and to Kathy directly is over the course of the past four years, I have really come to appreciate her. You know, there's some contentious moments, but she has come up with some ideas that are amazing, I thought. And I thought to myself, you know, I never would have thought of that if it weren't for her. And I really, I'm going to miss her on the council, so I hope she hears that.
Wonderful. Thank you, Councilmember Plekish.
Just hear here to Councilmember Plekish's comments and to wish Kathy very well in her new community.
Wonderful. Yes. I've had the pleasure of knowing Councilmember Iverson before she was a council member as a planning commissioner. I believe she spent nine years on the planning commission and then four years on the council. Throughout that time, there has been no stronger advocate for her constituents. And her constituents are all of our constituents. It is one community, and she represented their concerns, brought them forward to council, was very thoughtful about, you know, how she put forward those concerns. And she brought just a wealth of experience from being on the planning commission, but also in her professional and personal life. And one thing is incredibly evident is that she cares so very deeply about this community. And I will miss her perspective, her voice, and I was going to say her friendship, but she's not moving too far away, so I could, you know, we can maintain that, that's to be certain. But certainly, as a colleague, I will miss her. So we wish her the very best in her new endeavors, in her new community. And I would just say, we've been honored and privileged to have her serve with us.
And Madam Mayor, I'll just add too that we hope to get her back, whether it's at the next meeting or the subsequent meeting, to celebrate her, recognize her. You know, she's resigning kind of quickly just because of the property change, so we don't want to forget about all the things that you just said and how we can pay the appropriate homage to her, so we'll try to get her back.
Wonderful. I look forward to it. All right, very good. Then if there are no other questions or items for discussion from the consent agenda, would someone care to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as outlined, please, Mayor.
Thank you. In a second. It's been first and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And takes us to new business, and the first item under new business this evening is to consider adoption of Resolution 29-2024, approving an impervious surface and driveway setback variance, or variances, pardon me, at 715 Rice Street East. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Gilner is going to walk us through this item.
Yes, Planner Quarles is out sick, but I will try to do as best of job I can, knowing that she's a great presenter. We do have the owner and applicant present this evening for this application. The project is located just close to City Hall here, near the corner of Rice and Broadway. Here's an aerial photograph of the property. You can see that the home comprises quite a bit of the property today. It's guided R 3A single and two-family residential district, and it's guided central core residential in our comprehensive plan. You can see here on this image the outline of the existing home. And the property is over 10,000 square feet, and the home was built in 2001, and the current impervious surface on the lot is 54.4%. Now, there was no impervious surface limit in 2001 when this home was built. So this is considered a legal nonconformity. That means they can maintain, repair, or replace the impervious surface that was allowed back in 2001. But any modifications that exceed today's regulations would require a variance, and so they have a submitted two variance requests. Their proposal is to actually decrease the total hardscape on the property to support some landscaping improvements. They'd like to convert a portion of the impervious surface to permeable engineered surfaces. An applicant can speak more to that. They'd also like to reconfigure the location of the driveway as well. This requires two requests. The first is for 15.2% off the required 35% limit for impervious surface to a total of 50.2%. That is an overall decrease of hardscape on the property, but still requires a variance due to it being over the 35% limit. The second variance request is about parking area setback. They are requesting to be seven feet off the required 10-foot setback in the side yard so that their pavement is three feet from the property line. Just to clarify that this variance here about setbacks is only about paved surfaces. It's not about the structure itself. I've got two images side by side here, so you can compare the existing impervious surface in red to the proposed permeable pavers in yellow, with, of course, the impervious surface of the rooftop of the home and other surfaces. They do plan to remove a paver walk and tree in the backyard and replace it with a new patio and steppers and water feature. They would like to convert the driveway to permeable pavers, shown there in that orange-yellow color. And they'd like to make a few more improvements to the front yard with walkways and then reconfigure their retaining walls as well. Just pointing to those various pieces of the plan. And then for impervious surface, you can also see that side-by-side difference. 18.5% of the site would be comprised of that engineered permeable surface. An applicant can speak more to how that works. And then there would be 31.7% of just impervious surface, meaning not permeable at all, just completely hardscape. And that brings us to that total of 50.2% proposed. I've got another diagram with some colors here to try to help navigate the different parts of the site. So first, what they like to do is just straighten out the driveway. So the green section is area that's already paved, that's considered protected under the nonconforming uses section of our code. And then the yellow is new pavement that they'd like to add. And then the purple is the removal of some pavement up at the top right, or top left of the screen. We can come back to this image if it's helpful. Here I did note that three-foot setback for pavement that they are proposing on the west property line. The applicant sent out a letter to people living within 500 feet of this proposal. There was no neighborhood meeting required, and we have not received any public comments. The engineering department is processing a right-of-way permit for some improvements near the street. That's just done at the administrative level, doesn't require council review. They would need a stormwater facilities maintenance agreement for the permeable pavers. And then tree removal falls below the required replacement threshold, so it's not at play here. The planning commission discussed the history of hardcover restrictions overall, recognizing that there were not hardcover restrictions when this home was built in 2001. Typically, our homeowners would leave a little bit of space for future landscaping and not build quite as large of a house, but that just was not the case in 2001. They also asked a few questions about pervious pavers and stormwater mitigation, which the applicant helped address. And the planning commission felt comfortable with this proposal and recommended approval because they felt the overall reduction in hardcover was a very reasonable solution. They liked the pervious pavers. They thought it was an overall improvement to the property and saw that really they were making the best of a situation that they bought into. So the proposed motion is to adopt the resolution approving both variances for this property.
Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Gilner. Counsel, questions of staff? Councilmember McDonald?
Director Gilner, what is the material of the driveway now?
I believe it's concrete, but we could ask the applicant to clarify, or the homeowner.
I guess I just wasn't totally clear, but it is impervious.
Impervious, completely impervious, yes. And we do have one image, actually, that just helps show that side-by-side shows that it's... On the left image, that's what it's like now, and it's just tons of red color because it's completely impervious, so that orange would turn some of those spaces to permeable.
Thank you for clarifying.
I do have a couple of questions before I invite the applicant to come forward. So at the beginning of your presentation, Ms. Gilner, you talk about the legal nonconforming items on the property. It says that they're allowed to maintain, repair, or replace. Would this not be considered a replacement?
So actually, I have one image that'll answer that question. So the replacement is the green color. Those are surfaces that they're just going to replace essentially with new pavers, either permeable or not. The yellow is an expansion. That area is green grass right now, so the yellow would be paved. So that's not protected under our nonconforming ordinance.
So essentially, a 10 by 11 strip of new driveway is the cause for the request for a variance?
That's right, because they're above and beyond the 35% limit in this property, so they're not entitled to an expansion of impervious surface unless a variance is processed.
But it's still also a reduction where they are currently.
Correct, yes. They are removing the purple section, which allows for a reduction.
And then further to that, we currently have an impervious surface. The entire, the totality of the existing driveway is all impervious. And yet, they're replacing with 18.5% of permeable surface. Yet that, a permeable surface, which, I'm not an engineer, but the word indicates that water can go through. Isn't the intent there, then, that that really shouldn't count as hardcover?
Every city does this a little differently. We've decided in this city to still count it as impervious, that it can be managed. If a permeable system is not continually maintained, it will not be effective. And so we...
But we don't actively manage. And I guess it's, my point is, and that's a, as we've edited our code over time, maybe it would be reasonable, because that's really, we have an agreement understood. We could still do that administratively, right, through permits, when people apply for their permits. But here I'm seeing, you know, we've gone, we're reducing the hardcover. Where are, not we, pardon me, I'm including myself in your project here. But the applicant is including beneficial items. As we know, the variance process is not a very quick and can be an expensive process. I would just ask staff and council to consider that maybe in situations like this, it wouldn't rise to the level of needing a variance, that we might structure how we write our code in such a way that the logic tells us this is, you know, an improvement from where things currently are. Not a discussion for today, just throwing it out there, maybe for a future agenda item, which we already passed that item on the agenda, but something to potentially consider, you know, to save time for staff, for applicants, for everyone. Okay. Any other questions or thoughts? No? Would the applicant like to say a few words? You don't have to. It's totally up to you. You may pass. It doesn't impact anything. Yep. Well, thank you for your time and your patience as you go through this process. Very good. Well, I'll bring it back to the council. The applicant has chosen to not come forward. Any thoughts on the proposal before you this evening?
Madam Mayor, I may as well go first here. First, I'd like to say the planning commission, I think, did an outstanding job in taking a look at all the facts and coming to the proper solution. I don't have any problem with this. I mean, the variance is required based on our ordinances, and so everyone has to be here for this. But what the applicant is doing is very reasonable. It is a reduction in a percentage, even though it doesn't get to the limit, but it's a reduction. That's a good thing. And what they've laid out here makes total sense, and I understand it, so I'm in favor of it.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councilmember McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. My thinking is right along the lines of Councilmember Plekish. I think it was interesting to hear how different cities count for permeable versus impervious surfaces. But for this application, I see it as an improvement, and I think it's a welcomed reduction, so I support it as well.
Yes, thank you. It's hard to believe that it was 20-plus years ago that those houses were built. Keith Waters was the designer, developer, builder, and they're beautiful. And I know there was a lot of discussion in the city at that time about the project in particular, not just that home, but the other homes along Rice Street there. And it was before I was on the council. I'm not going to date myself quite that much. But I am surprised that we didn't have hardcover limits back then. That's interesting. But be that as it may, as my fellow council members have stated, and also the planning commission rightly pointed out, these are improvements. This meets not only, it definitely is meeting the spirit and intent of what we're trying to accomplish here, which is, you know, reducing hardcover. So, you know, these are small lots, and the way things are built, and it's challenging at times, you know, to try and save homes and not encroach on your neighbor. But everything that's proposed here is quite reasonable. And I certainly appreciate the reduction, not only the hardcover, but also the inclusion of the permeable surface there. So with that, we have a resolution before us for consideration. So would someone care to make a motion to adopt Resolution 29-2024, approving the impervious surface and setback variances at 715 Rice Street East?
So moved, Madam Mayor. In a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. The last item under new business this evening is item 8B, just to consider adoption of Resolution 28-2024, approving design of Clappridge Park improvements and directing staff to prepare construction documents. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Parks and Environment Planner, Keizer, is going to take this one. It's a mouthful, but it's an important title, and I'm glad he's going to be presenting this item and not me.
Yes, Pep.
There you go.
Pep Keizer.
Come back.
It will never go away. Always be careful of what title you accept or are given.
Now I know. It's a good life lesson. Thank you, Mayor Dole, Madam Mayor and Council. So as is noted, I'll go over Resolution 28-2024, which is looking at approving the design of... of Clapridge Park improvements and directing staff to prepare construction documents for those said improvements. So I'll first go over pretty briefly just some background as to how we got here, and then I'll go over kind of where we are in the process, where we're going to go, and then go over the site plan improvements, and then the building plan improvements, and go into some cost estimates as well before diving into next steps. So a little bit of background, this process all kind of started with the Parks and Trails Master Plan, which was created in 2019. And in that master plan, they included a concept-level plan, you could say, for Clapridge Park, which is shown there on the bottom right of this slide. Kind of just a general framework for some potential proposed improvements for Clapridge Park that the Parks and Trails Board have been working through, essentially through this process. Initially, with that Parks and Trails Master Plan, some of these proposed improvements were incorporated into the CIP. Those were incorporated over various years on different line items. And through the discussion with the city council and the Parks and Trails Board, we ultimately ended up deciding to create a more comprehensive plan moving forward that incorporates all these proposed improvements into one plan and into one proposed construction line item in the CIP, which is noted as in 2025. Really, the goal of that was to limit construction time of these proposed improvements and hopefully save some money to combining a lot of these proposed improvements. So the CIP was ultimately updated more recently to incorporate the cost estimates that are in the agenda packet here tonight for the proposed improvements. And even more recently, the city council allocated some additional funds from the excess reserves to go into the Parks and Trails CIP, more or less specifically for the Clapridge Park improvements. So where we're at right now, we're kind of at the tail end of design development through these five stages of the design process. So we've been through the schematic or the concept-level design, and now we're kind of at the end of the design development. And with Resolution 28-2024, we would be moving on to Phase 3, which is completing the construction documents before moving on to the bidding and ultimately construction process. So I'll go over these proposed improvements here. Now, these proposed improvements are specifically for the site plan or the site itself. I'll go into the proposed building improvements in the next couple of slides here. But really, the main idea for all these proposed improvements was first to keep the east side of Clapridge Park more or less quiet and natural, serene area, and put more of the activity on the west side of Clapridge Park. So you see that kind of trend in these proposed improvements here. So to start off, the first one here being the playground, the idea was to move the playground closer to the warming house, mainly for a few different reasons. The first being that it could be closer to the warming house so that the playground users or any of the other users in the plaza or anything like that can utilize the warming house more so than where the current playground is, which is kind of on the hillside in the middle north area of Clapridge Park. And also to allow ADA accessibility. Right now, the current playground does not have ADA accessibility. There's no sidewalk to the playground, so it's difficult for folks to get to if they're not able. With that proposed playground, you can also note that there's a note there called embankment slide on the north side of the playground. That's just kind of another feature that the Parks and Trails Board is looking at, kind of a hillside slide at the north end of that playground, too. The second item would be the parking lot. As I noted, the parking lot is important because right now there's not really any formalized public parking at Clapridge Park. There's some on-street parking now as at a boulevard and on Park Street, and some now formalized parking up at Bell Courts as well, but not anything inside the park. So the parking lot is important because it provides access to folks and parking for folks, but also it provides that ADA accessibility to the warming house, to the play area, and the open lawn itself as well. So you can note there, the parking lot is overall about 20 stalls. We did note there that nine of them would be paved, and we're looking at options for doing potential grass pavers or general proof of parking with that parking lot as well. So we'll kind of flesh out some more ideas through the construction document phase for that portion, too. The third being drainage and irrigation improvements. So this is mainly in the open lawn area, open grass area of the ball field, you could say, with the hockey rink. So the main idea with this is that we would be leveling that playing field or the open lawn to allow for better drainage and putting in some drain tiles under there and adding an irrigation system to help with maintenance. So this will really help in the wintertime to flood the ice rink there and in the summer months, keeping that area as dry as possible for folks to play on. The fourth one there is a warming house renovation, but I'll touch on that in the next slide. Outdoor plaza. So this is the area just to the east of the warming house and south of the play area, where we would be adding in an outdoor area, outdoor gathering area, that folks can utilize if they're utilizing the play area or the warming house or in the winter during the, when the ice rink is there as well. So there's options for additional seating, fire pits out there, different amenities to allow for that gathering space. Again, with the Bell Courts Cabana, I'll go that and a couple more slides here for that one. The stairway connection. So these next couple here, next few, the stairway connection, hillside slides, and the Minnetoka Avenue North Sidewalk, you can see that they're all designated in a, you know, outlined in a red dotted area there. So the idea with this, and I'll go more into this with the cost estimates as well, but these items would most likely be added during the bidding process as an alternate bid, just to save on costs and to determine if we can move forward on these proposed improvements with the overall project. So we would essentially go through the construction document phase of these to have the construction documents. So when we are able to move forward on those, we are able to do so. But for the stairway connection, Parks and Trails Board found it important to add a connection from Clapridge Park due to Bell Courts up there and to Park Street to the north. And really, if you go there now, you can see kind of a makeshift path that folks use to get down that area. And if you know, it's a very steep, steep trail and hard to access. So that was one of the main reasons to add this stairway connection. And then adding a kind of unique feature, you could say, to those stairways are some proposed hillside slides along that, too. So that would again be another part of that alternate bid process, project, too. And then again, the Minnetoka Avenue North Sidewalk as a alternate bid on the west side there, Minnetoka Avenue, to complete the circle and access around Clapridge Park, too. And then also as small notes here, we did add some notes for some areas for some future public art installations, which we just talked about at the workshop here today, and then some general park signage areas, too. So we want to include those just to show potential locations for those for future So now I'll go into the proposed improvements for the warming house. So what's on your screen is the proposed footprint or proposed layout for the warming house. And with this, the main idea from the Parks and Trails Board was to make this warming house more used, essentially, especially during the summer months. And we think the relocation of the playground area will help in this cause. But also, some of the proposed improvements include increasing the indoor space for the warming, for the warming room. I put a note there that the existing indoor space, essentially the indoor gathering space where people store mainly ice skates and change if they need to, is just under 400 square feet, and the proposed indoor space with these renovations would be 873 square feet. So you can see it's almost double the indoor space to allow more gathering and activities in that space. There'd still be a section of the warming house to be a covered seating area, and we would still keep a indoor and outdoor fireplace as well. One of the other changes of note would be that we were proposing to add a door just to access the restrooms. And really, this is important mainly because if there's folks using the playground or community at events in Clapridge Park, we could essentially just open that door up and not the entire warming room for folks just to access the restrooms if they need And then these are just a couple of renderings that HCM, our consultant, put together to as what it could look like at this point. And again, a lot of these different ideas of specific materials, colors, all that kind of stuff will be discussed and worked out in the construction document phase, so there'll be additional review time for those items. For the Bell Courts Cabana, now, the proposed improvements, it's really just a general refresh. It's very minimal for what we're proposing for the cabana here. The main things are to add a drinking fountain or water bottle filler just outside the restroom area and outside the covered porch area, add a new coat of paint on there, some possible landscaping updates. And then probably one of the more significant proposals is to explore some ADA accessible sidewalk options to enter the cabana, because currently, right now, there's a small sidewalk connection, but you need to utilize the stairs to get up to the cabana itself. Otherwise, you need to go through the grass, which is not, you know, very accessible to a lot of folks. So we're looking at different options on how to make it accessible to people. So cost itself, we broke it down into three areas here. The Clapridge Park improvements, the warming house renovation, and the Bell Courts Cabana refresh. So the total estimated cost is just under $2.8 million. There's some more detailed cost estimates in the agenda packet as well. And so in 2025, the CIP currently shows that total estimated cost of just under $2.8 million. But like I said, this number also includes the bid alternates that we were proposing as well. So depending on the numbers that we get back for all the proposed improvements, that's when we can have the discussion of either taking some of those proposed improvements out and waiting for different time to implement those, or else looking at different funding sources like grant funding as well can be another option to help kind of fill the gap within the Parks and Trails CIP. A little bit about community engagement. So this has been going on for a couple of years now. We've had community meetings, community surveys. We did some direct neighborhood mailings all throughout this process. Before, we were doing the comprehensive plan, and now currently, as we are doing the comprehensive plan, so we've been touching base with the community on a few different times, at a few different times. And additional community engagement will, or will be planned when the construction documents are more or less at 50% completion. And that'll also be another touching point with the city council to make sure that we're still on the right track, still aligned with council as we move forward if the proposed designs are approved here tonight. So next steps, we'll touch base with WSB and HCM, our consultants, to make sure any amendments are confirmed or finalized with this confirmed scope if the design is approved. Parks and Trails Board, staff, and the consultants would then start working on those construction documents. And again, like I noted, there'll be some more community engagement and engagement with the city council themselves as we go through that construction document process. So the plan is still to finish those construction documents by this winter, to have it put out to bid this winter, to have potential construction start time in the spring or fall of 2025. So with that, there's the resolution, and I'll bring back to Madam Mayor and Council for any questions you have for me.
Wonderful. Thank you, Nick. Questions of staff? Molly? No? Alex, any questions?
Can you put that chart up again that showed Clapridge Park, the overall? Just minor things here. I was just curious what proof of parking means. And also, right below that is grass pavers. I can envision maybe something like that, but I'm not quite sure what it is. Maybe you could explain that?
Yeah, Councilmember Plekish, good question. So really what this is, is they're really just going to look at options for that area because it was noted in the council feedback, too, that maybe 20 stalls is too many stalls or too big of a parking lot for the site right now. So we would leave, with proof of parking, we would leave an area there. If needed, we can add more parking on that side. Otherwise, we would look at other options to put that parking lot there, but kind of even with the last applicant that we had here, too, look at ways to make that area permeable with permeable pavers, grass pavers, that sort of thing.
Is that same thing permeable paver and a grass paver?
There's different options for that, but generally, the same thing.
The idea is we'll keep part of it grassy, and if the need is there based on some history, then we will cover it in the future? Is that the idea?
Well, I would say, right now, we would either leave it completely grass right now and not put the grass pavers on there, and that would kind of confirm our proof of parking aspect. So if we see that the parking lot is completely full pretty often, then we can look at options to either do it in the same surface and have it impervious surface or include the grass paver option at that time. But the other option is just to do the grass paver system right away as well. So those are kind of the questions we're going to try to deal with in this construction document phase.
All right, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, I think it's hard for me to believe that it's been five years since we had the master plan, and we're at this point, but we've had a few starts and stops, and funding has always been, you know, top of mind because not only do we want to make the improvements, but we want to be environmentally sensitive to the area. It's such a focal point. It's smack in the middle of town, and it has to remain charming, and it has to remain beautiful, and we want to be environmentally sensitive and make all of these improvements, as we see, are expensive, but we want them done well. So I was really thankful to the Parks and Trails Board for all of their work, and Councilmember McDonald, who sat in on many of those meetings, and for coming up with this design, because this is, this is different than what we had at the master plan, and we went back to the drawing board with some, to come up with some new creative ideas. And then we looked at the price tags, and we went, woo! So those alternatives, or, right, is that what we're calling them?
Alternative bids, yeah.
Alternative bids for some of the various elements that won't be detractors from the project, but they are something that perhaps we can add at a later time if we're so inclined, or remove and allow the project to move forward based on budgetary constraints. So I am anxious to see, you know, what they come up with, and we'll take it from there. Well, excellent. Couple things of note also, when we were recognizing Councilmember Iverson and her service in talking specifically about this project, I know that she had mentioned some of the finishes for the inside and durability, and she speaks from experience with a son who has played hockey his entire life. So those are certainly some of the things that we'll continue to carry forward and think about as the project moves forward.
Yep.
Excellent. All right. Any, anything else come up? No? All right. Then how about we move forward with a resolution to adopt Resolution 28-2024, approving the design of Clapridge Park improvements and directing staff to prepare construction documents?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Plekish. In a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those- All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the motion passes. That concludes new business and takes us to the next agenda item, which is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got several items that I'd like to touch on briefly. One is just to thank the council, staff, the community, the YZeta Conservancy, and so many other community partners for coming out on the 13th to celebrate the lake walk and the official opening of the lake walk. We didn't have the best weather, but we still were able to get hundreds of people out on the lake walk and celebrate and officially cut the ribbon. So thanks again for everybody that came out, and I hope you're enjoying the lake walk. Thanks to Liv Marandino for coordinating that event. I think it was just an incredible success, and I think everybody had a smile on their face, whether it was just for the lake walk or the ice cream or the hot dogs or the bubbles that our city attorney, you know, was, took part in with the bubble maker guy. He didn't really, but I'm just, I know a lot of kids did.
Yeah.
That's a good image, though.
Fun times.
So thanks, everybody, for coming out. Really appreciate that. Looking forward, on Thursday, we have our annual police and fire softball game. This is an event that the YZeta Crime Prevention Coalition works with and old national cuts us, cuts the organization a big check to continue all the great work that they do for the community. It's really been pretty contentious over the past few years with police and fire, and they've been kind of going back and forth. Fire crushed it last year, just so happens to coincide with whatever team I'm on loses. But I see Chief Schultz over there. I'm pretty sure he's been spending the entire meeting, putting his batting order together. So I know they're, they're, they're back and hoping for a vengeance this, this time around. So it's, it'll be in Clapridge Park, 6:00 PM. Residents, anybody else, come out and enjoy. It's a good atmosphere. We're all playing around, and a lot of good people come out, and we can appreciate all of our public safety officials, and it all goes for a good cause. So anything to add there, Chief? All right, good.
He's ready.
In addition to police-fire softball game, we do have Night to Unite before the next council meeting. That'll be starting at around 5:30 to 8-ish, or basically when the sun goes down. And as a result of Night to Unite, and that taking place on August 6th, our next council meeting will be the night after on a Wednesday, August 7th. So just a reminder to the council, anybody at home, we're celebrating Night to Unite. We'll be out in all the, all the different neighborhoods, and we'll then conduct city business on the 7th. At the 7th, we are planning to appoint a new council member to replace the, or to fill the vacancy that Kathy Iverson, Councilmember Iverson, sat on, and I just want to make a note, we are, like I had mentioned before, we'll hopefully be able to recognize Kathy at a future meeting in the near future. I just wanted to mention that from a staffing perspective, whether people know this or not, but Kathy is probably the, I say this in a good way, quirkiest, funnest, just really interesting and really nice person to, I mean, she's, she's great. She's fun to work with, and I know personally, I'll truly miss her. So sorry to see her go, but excited for her in her next phase outside of YZeta. But like you said, she's not going to be too far away. So we'll have to, you know, grill her a little bit when she comes back here, but she, her legacy will not be forgotten. Lastly, just talking about transition with Councilmember Iverson. Also, bittersweet moment, too, our wonderful, cue in all the adjectives that I could, I could use, but our community development director, Emily Gellner, is going to be leaving us as well. She's been here five years. I've had the privilege of working with her throughout that entire time. She's accepted an offer at a larger community with additional responsibilities, so really proud of her and watching her grow and seeing where her career is going to take, take her. Just real quick, all of our directors and other folks in the organization, we take a strength finder analysis, and Emily's strengths, she's got many, but the top five, I'll just say, futuristic, strategic, significant, focus, and activator. And I think that embodies, you know, amongst many others, kind of what she's done here, all the good things, the process that she's led, that her leadership with Panaway, and probably most importantly, being part of the leadership group and the leadership team and building a great team within community development, which I'm really proud of, and that's going to be your legacy is the people that you've worked with in order to serve the organization and the community. So we'll celebrate her later as well, maybe in the council meeting, maybe at a bar and grill somewhere. But I just want to acknowledge Emily and just really proud of her and privileged to work with you for five years. And that's all I got.
Wonderful. Oh, so many goodbyes. My goodness. I didn't bring my tissues with me. So now, oh, look, they never burn away.
There's more, too.
Y'all know me so well. Thank you. No, it's, it's been such an honor and a privilege to, we have so much, so many new people within the community, and by new, I mean, not anybody who's been here in like 20, 30 years, right? So in YZeta, you're always a new person until you've been here 30 years, I think, or a couple generations, right, Mike? Exactly. Mike Kelly, Director of Public Works. I think he learned to walk at the city of YZeta. So, no, Emily, congratulations. Well deserved. We wish you the very best, and thank you for your commitment and dedicated service to the YZeta community, and I look forward to celebrating your, your future endeavors soon. So anything else, city manager? No? I thought of one more thing for, for Nick and his nickname. So as Parks and Environment Planner, just consider yourself lucky you weren't the Parks and Environment Planner intern because then it'd be Peppy. Peppy Kezer. Instead, we'll just leave it at Pep.
We can make an exception.
We can make an exception, but no, he's shaking his head no. I couldn't resist. So this is going to follow you in perpetuity. I hope you know this. Okay, good. And it's all in good fun. Wonderful. All right, seeing that there's no other business at hand, how about a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
In a second?
Second.
It's been first and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. We are adjourned.